At 5:37 PM Tuesday, August 21st, 2018 in room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting ex officio member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barlow.
Here.
Mrs. Becker.
Here.
Chairman Arvin.
Here.
Mr. Susner.
Ms. Seelinger.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Workman.
Here.
Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance as we're able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In the absence of a school board clerk, I'm reporting, I am appointing Mr. Gary Smith as interim school board clerk for this meeting. Congratulations, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
2.01, approval of agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 3.01, RPT, RPS, transportation study update. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, if someone may have Brian Law from Rochester Public Transit, Scott Sheridan, Executive Director of Operations, and Jeff Cappers, Manager of Transportation. As they get set up, I think the last update I gave the board is that we were waiting for the results of Phase Two of the study. We have received those findings and last night or yesterday afternoon, the information was presented to the community of the whole, I think that group is called, and we felt that the board should get the same presentation that was given to them. So we just kind of want to update you on where we're at on that process. So I'm going to turn it over to Brian, Scott, and Jeff.
Good evening, board members. I'd like to introduce Brian Law, who is going to do the presentation tonight, and then the panel up here along with Superintendent Munoz are more than willing to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much for having us here, for having me here. Again, my name is Brian Law. I'm the Principal Transit Planner with the City of Rochester. And the presentation we have right here is what was presented yesterday to Rochester City Council's Committee of the Whole. So just to start off with, we can talk about the goals of the study, which are, and these are shared goals between the school district and the city. We want to find cost-effective student transportation. We want to be able to reallocate yellow bus service in a more efficient way and to allow for all schools to have the same or very similar start times in the mornings. We want to train that next generation of transit riders, demystify public transit for them, and get them on the bus at a younger age than perhaps they otherwise would be, so they can grow up to be the transit riders of the future. And we want to re, or we want to increase utilization of the RPT network. This, part of this would be to increase the ridership on our transit routes. Our scope of work goes from policy items to route study, to identifying and securing those funding sources, and then implementing of, implementation of the plan. The red star shows kind of where we are right now. There's a route study that RPS will be doing that is coming up, so we're before that. The funding sources dot there also is part, is two parts. One is identifying those sources, the other is securing them. So we have identified, in a general sense, what they could be. So we've developed 16 different routes on top of what we already provide at Rochester Public Transit, which would transport students from their home areas to their, to their schools. We've identified the, some timetables for them, route paths for them, or alignments. Financial plans for them have been developed. And this is a good point to, or a good point at which I can say that we analyzed three schools here, the three high, the three public high schools, and three of the middle schools as well. So, and they are kind of paired in these routes that we've, these 16 routes we've developed. Those, a high school and a middle school are more or less paired geographically. No elementary schools have been part of this analysis, neither have any parochial schools, and neither have any citywide RPS programs. This is strictly these, the analysis that we've done so far has only been for these three high schools and three middle schools. It's not to say that these other, especially like citywide and parochial schools couldn't be involved at a later date, but that's not part of any analysis we'll be presenting tonight. And so here we see the number of students at the six different high schools that could ride, the far left column, or second from the left column, shows the number of students from each of these schools that could be riding the 16 routes that we've identified as part of this project. The middle column shows students from those schools that could ride the regular RPT routes. Now, that's not necessarily the routes as they exist today. We have a transit development plan that, a five-year development plan that was adopted in May of last year, and that really calls for a major restructuring of RPT routes. So when we talk about RPT routes and kind of the, the ordinary service that we provide, we're talking about that full build-out of our five-year transit development plan, not necessarily the routes as they exist today. So that is one, kind of, one of the moving parts of the many cogs in this whole machine. So you can see there's about 3,300 students, 3,400 students who could ride the new routes that we've devised, just over 200 who could ride a local route that exists on our regular network. And again, I mean, they're free to ride any route they want and transfer downtown probably, and then, you know, onto a second route. We're trying to eliminate that. So that's where those, those 200 students would be more or less getting a direct ride from their home to their school. For a total, then, of 35, 3,582 students who could take advantage of this, of this program. The far right column shows projected daily ridership. The assumption we made there was if, if all 3,500 students ride in the morning, not all of them are going to ride home in the, in the afternoon. They'll catch a ride with somebody else, they'll walk, they'll ride their bike, they'll, your parents can pick them up then, but they can't in the morning, things like that. There's, it's a kind of a rule of thumb in transit to look at the 75% of eligible students would make an entire round trip a day. So all of them in the morning, half of them in the evening, that, maybe that's another way to think of it. We've come to a total of 5,376 or 5,400 students who could make two, you know, two trips a day. We've put together a series of five tiers. When we originated this study, we looked at an AM and a PM trip, and that was it. We began to realize that there was, there were some efficiencies we could find in the system, and while there's basically only one AM bell time for the nine o'clock start time, we were able to find two PM bell times, earlier one for middle school, later one for, for high school. We also thought about the after-school activities, extracurriculars that are important, and so we were able to add a fifth tier for, or a tier in the afternoon for, for that. It's been pointed out that the 4:45 PM departure time is probably not realistic for the activity bus, it needs to be later. That's, that's really no problem. The later we get into the day, we at RPT won't be faced with the same capacity constraints that we would be certainly in the morning. So we could make that closer to seven o'clock or whenever we think should be, you know, we could come to an appropriate time for that. And then finally, at the very beginning of the day, an early AM tier was something that our consultant was able to add that in, using some reverse trips at RPS, at RPT, that could then help with delivering some of the parochial school students and making transfers on the, earlier in the morning when the RPS routes wouldn't be running yet. So we have figured out a way to have basically five trips per day on those 16 routes. We also assumed that the system would be operating only, only on school days, so 174 days a year. I think that number's correct, but it's maybe off by two or three. But again, easy enough to, to make that accurate. That would result in, for Rochester Public Transit, that would result in 11,000 additional net revenue hours and almost 200,000 additional revenue miles per year. And that would increase our administrative costs, of course. There would be time for people in my office administering this new system. So that 15% is incorporated into all of our costs. Again, I mentioned earlier that the, that this all assumes the full build-out of the transit development plan, so that's something to keep in mind. Another thing that's very important, though, this is a, this will be a public service. It'll be open to everybody. We, as a public transit provider, we have to operate that way. Anything we put out there has to be, you know, an open door to everybody who can pay a fare and get on the bus. So this would be, these would be general public routes. And there are some local sources of funding that need to be identified and secured. So the chart then shows if we started this in calendar year 2019, just think of that as year one, it's probably too early, but think of that as year one, the annual cost would come out to about $172,000. We typically get an 80/20 split with state and federal sources. In other words, the government pays, those other units of government pay us 80% of the cost, and we then are responsible for 20%. So if we're able to continue that ratio with these costs, we would see a local responsibility of 348, 349,000 in that, in that year one. And then that would increase over the years, we've plotted this out for 10 years, it would increase to about three, 437,000 in the 10th year. So do keep that, that, that 348,000 in the upper right there, do keep that in mind when we get to a slide a little bit later.
That's the incremental cost, though, is what you're saying?
Well, this, these are operating costs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're incremental, they're with the additional service.
Well, this is what it would cost to run it each year.
Just for the school, for the school routes?
Yes, yes.
That's, that's what I was.
Okay, yeah, sorry, yeah. So this is capital needs, then. Those 16 routes would require 22 new buses, over and above anything else we're proposing at RPT. Five of those would be 60-foot articulated buses, the kind that have the accordion thing in the middle. The other 17 would be the regular 40-foot buses like, like you see on our streets right now. We would have to put bus stop signs out in new areas of the city that we don't currently have stops. And we would also, because of these 22 new buses, we would have to expand our garage again. Now, that's something to understand, too. We're currently talking about expanding the PWTOC or the, the public transit garage where the buses are parked overnight. That's already underway. That's because of the expansion we have in our, planned for our fleet already. So this program would require 22 buses in addition to that, and they would need a place to be overnight. So all these capital costs come up to about $16 million. If we get the 80/20 split like we, like we, we have with other capital projects over the years, that local funding responsibility would come to 3.2 million. And we amortize that over 15 years. That's, that's the life of a bus, basically. We have to amortize a city bus over 15 years. And if it had to be bonded at 4%, that comes up to 287,000 per year. Now, if we didn't get the state and federal funding, that, and we were on the hook for the entire 16 million, that annual debt support, if necessary, would be more in the order of $1.4 million. So that's, that's kind of the worst-case scenario. But as I said before, that 3, 348,000 in the upper right, we're going to add that to the 287 in the bottom right there, and we'll come up with 635,000 for total annual in the, in year one of this. So operating plus the capital cost together, again, assuming we get 80/20 funding from the state and federal government. Now, if that doesn't come through, the worst-case scenario is that, you know, here locally, we're on the hook for all of this. That total local cost in the first year would be 2.3 million. And it increases from there because of inflation. So this, this project has also been done with the assumption that the, the public schools would reimburse Rochester Public Transit at some level for this, for this project. And so we have some options on how to do this. The top row there shows us how it would look if RPS reimbursed RPT on a per-student basis. So basically, every time a student boarded the bus, they're, they're counted, or they dip a card in, or something like that. That count then would, would be reported to, we would then report that, that cost to RPS, and we would get reimbursed at 68 to 78 cents per trip. Now, that, that number comes from the, that 635 up there divided by the 5,300 riders per day, and then multiplied by 174 days per year. That's how we get that calculation. Now, in parentheses, you see again the worst-case scenario, the same number of riders per day, the same days per year, but instead of 636,000, it was more like 200, or I'm sorry, 2.3 million. So at that point, each ride might cost between $2.47 to $2.70 per ride. Now, another option is for RPS to provide a lump sum to RPT every year. This would mean that we would base it on the idea that we have that level of ridership at the, and with these costs, and just basically the, the, the local cost there would be reimbursed as a lump sum from RPS to RPT. Or again, in parentheses, kind of the worst-case scenario. And then the bottom row shows what would, if, if RPS just purchased bus passes from RPT. We have, we have bus passes available now, and RPS actually does purchase some, some passes from us right now. And we could negotiate that amount, we could negotiate those rates. But this would basically then, you know, require the students then to actually use the fare box by, you know, dipping a card into the fare box, where the other two options would more or less be students showing a valid student ID and just being let on the bus. They would be counted, you know, the driver would manually count them on the fare box. And so this is our, our student fare policies that exist currently. We do have, basically, they're not actually student fares, they're youth fares, the top two are. Whether you're a student or not, if you're between the ages of six and 18, including age 18, you ride for half-price. And we do have student passes then of 90, 120, and 150-day durations. And those are geared around, you know, a spring semester, a fall semester, and a summer period. So these are currently available. These would be things that, you know, these are some of the passes that if we wanted to do the, the bottom row there, if that was what was chosen, these are kind of, this is kind of the starting point for considering those. So this shows our ridership at RPT in 2017 versus what we would expect in year one of this plan. So we typically see about 7,100 riders per weekday, and about, we had 1, 1.8 million rides in 2017. And so we get an annual operating cost then of 8.5 million for 2017. In year one of this, we would expect that, those 53, 5,376 new riders on top of the 7,100, and an annual operating cost of 872,000 on top of the 8.5 million, to give us a new total of about 12,000, 12 and a half thousand riders per day, per weekday, and 9 and a half million in operating costs, which is a 10% increase in operating costs. And one of the things we've noticed here is that for a 10% increase in our operating costs, we might see an annual ridership increase of 50%, which is not nothing. And weekdays would be an even bigger share of that. It'd be about 75% increase of our weekday ridership. So these are the implications for Rochester Public Transit as we see them looking at this right now. Now, it is, it is important, too, to understand that this is assuming the 80/20 split with funding. As for RPS, these are the, this is again combining, or comparing 2017 data with what year one of this might look like if that were 2019. So 11,000 students on the yellow buses for a total operating cost of just under $5 million, and annual cost per student of $447. About two, about 2,600, well, or 2,600 of these students would be transported by RPT services, at, again, the cost of 637,000 per year. The other 8,400 would still be riding yellow buses. And the, you can see there how those work into a total, where the, the 11,000 students are transported in both scenarios. The projected school district operating cost is trying to be held static in the sense of, it's only increasing by inflation. That represents a 3% inflation rate from 2017 to 2019. So it's, it's a total increase of 6% over the two years. But you do come to a total annual cost per student of $474 instead of $447. There's a slight increase in that respect. So that's really part of what the, what the question might really be for the school district is, you know, do these costs look like something that's manageable? Do these costs look like something that's, you know, that meets the goals that you've set? So I mentioned earlier the route study. I know that RPS is going to be conducting a route study this fall. That will do a lot to answer the question I just asked, is do these costs look like something that's, that's reasonable? Both the city council and the school board then need to confirm or, or, or deny the desire to pursue this project. And that's what the second bullet is really getting at, is there's a decision that has to be made by this body and by the city council based on these numbers. And we have to determine how RPT will be reimbursed. We then, and if all those move forward, then we can finalize our routes, finalize the finances, secure that financing, and then finalize our policies and requirements, and implement the plan. And finally, I would just say that this whole scenario, this whole plan rests on the idea that the school bell times all have to be uniform, whereas near, you know, around the nine o'clock hour. So 8:45 to nine o'clock, something like that. Otherwise, this, this won't work. The, the efficiencies just aren't there with, with two start times like that. And also, in addition to the route study, I know that RPS will be rebidding its yellow bus contract at the end of this year. That will also give the school board a lot better insight as to what these costs will be. So with that, I think my presentation is complete. Yeah, so.
Questions? Mr. Barlow.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your presentation, Brian. And slide 14 really, for me, was the RPS implication was important. I had noted to ask that, but of course you provided the information regarding that. Question regarding the scope, focus, slide three, timeline. As I, I'm just curious as to, and I see where we are, this five-year transit development plan, this, would you say this is part of that five-year, it's separate from?
Right, right. And I should say, they were developed alongside each other. The transit development plan was something we entered into, it's, it's something we do every five, five to seven years in transit. And while we were doing that, we realized that we were going to be restructuring our transit system. And because this, this idea of transporting school students, public school students on public transit had been kind of in the air, we, at that point, thought, well, this is a good opportunity then to make that, you know, do that study alongside the transit development plan. So they did, they were informed, this study here was very much informed by the transit development plan, and the same consultant, in fact, was working on both. So they're very knowledgeable about the transit development plan as well. But the, the, everything presented here is, is over and above, separate from, and on top of whatever we've come up with for the transit development plan.
Okay. And then would, would the student pass usage extend beyond the normal school day? Could they, for instance, on the weekend, utilize public transit?
That's one of the considerations we've, we've had, and that's, you know, we would have to come to some agreement on that, but I mean, I think that's entirely within the realm of possibility. Again, because that furthers the goal of training that next generation of transit riders and demystifying public transit for them. And it seems to me like it would be a good benefit for them if they could, yes, they know they can ride the, the public transit bus to school in the morning and home in the, in the afternoon, but what if they can also, like I said, ride it on the weekends, ride it in the summer even, maybe? I don't know. We'll have to see how that, that would work out. But I think that's definitely a possibility, and one that, one that I would like to strive for.
Ms. Workman.
I have a question on slide seven. When you're talking about state sources and federal sources, the asterisk says the financial plan assumes the city's continued ability to get stated federal funding at its current level. Mr. Munoz, I'm assuming we get state and federal funding as well for transportation, and how is that factored into this, or would it be?
We get funding based on the number of kids that we transport.
Okay.
And I don't know, Jeff, if you want to give specific, how that's calculated, or?
I think we get, correct me if I'm wrong, but four point, either 4.23 or 4.85% of the, of the foundation aid is what per student for transportation purposes.
So really, it's not, we won't have access to additional money, the money that we were getting to put them on yellow buses, we would just, it'd be the same money we'd use to pay the city?
Right. I guess my question was, is that, was that amount considered in slide seven?
No. Slide seven is just showing what would be.
From the city's point?
Yes.
From the city's perspective. So it, would it be reasonable to maybe guess that, that number might go down or up depending on what our contribution would be to it? Or do we know right now how much we?
Well, they, they pretty much set the parameters on what it would cost us immediately for the next 10 years. I will say, the slide that had RPS yellow bus projected cost is not very close. We did ask for student to just give us preliminary numbers if we were trying to have elementary and special ed, and private school students start at the same time as the, our yellow, or our city buses. That number came out higher than what we're currently paying for all of our transportation.
Okay.
So what we are doing, we're in the process of writing an RFP, because we're, our contract expires this year anyway.
Right.
We're going to ask them to bid on a two-tiered system. Where Jeff and Scott are working on a, they think they have a plan that may allow us to make this happen. Hopefully, we'll reduce the cost a little bit. Probably not all the students are going to be starting at the same time and in exactly at the same time, and at least allow us to put our secondary kids on a, on a later start time. So we really won't know exactly. We are going to try, saying if you bid on the two-tiered, you have to bid on the other one we're putting out there as well. Because if you recall, a few years ago, when we bid, the current contract we're in, we did a two-tiered and a one-tiered, and nobody bid on the one-tier.
On the one-tier.
So we're hoping by saying, the only way you can get a shot at the two-tiered system is if you bid on the other one as well. And a lot of it has to do, at least talking to for student, is they're going to have to increase their routes, they're going to have to pay their drivers more because they're only going to be driving twice a day versus four times a day. They're going to have to increase their bus, buses to accommodate that. So just want to make sure, be upfront, that the number that's on that slide is, I don't think that's going to be very accurate, but we're hoping that it'll come under, so we do not, when it's all said and done, we're not spending more on transportation than we currently are. But our preliminary numbers would have us over, probably about a million dollars over than we're currently paying. So we, we can't afford that. So we're hoping this new little plan that we're going to put out will bring that number down.
So that $550.37, you think that number might be low as things stand right now?
Well, the, the 4.6 million I'm, I was talking about.
Oh, okay.
It's going to be more than that. Like I said, preliminary, it was 10-point-something million. We're also, as, as mentioned in the slides, we have a consultant that's looking at, can we do our special education routes more efficiently? So we're trying, we're trying that angle as well. So we're hoping with that angle and with the other option we're putting out there that that will bring that cost down.
Mr. Smith.
I want to make sure I understand what I'm hearing here. Am I hearing that, okay, this plan is, is, it's 6% more, $300,000 more a year than, than, than we're currently doing? But what you're saying, but what we're currently doing is going to change and is going to increase, well, so we, we don't know if $300,000 is less than we'd be, less than we'd be paying if we do it all ourselves or not? I mean, I'm confused in terms of where we are. You're saying the 4.6, it could be more than 4.6. Could that be, is it, is it, is it going to be more than the 300,000 more it would cost us if we went this direction? Is it potentially more, is it potentially more? And so that, actually, the $300,000 ends up, even though it's more money than we're currently paying, is actually going to be less than what we're doing if we? doing if we, if we do what we have to do in order to maintain doing it ourselves, the one or two-tiered systems?
Yeah, what we, we, and?
Because if it's not, my point is, if it's three hundred thousand dollars more in that, and it's going to be cheaper for us to stay with doing it ourselves, then we can just kind of end the thing and move on. But that question's still not resolved.
Yeah.
Because what we don't know, then, you know, I don't think we want to jump into anything yet, we just kind of want to let this all unfold and make sure we have all the data, all the information and costs. It would seem that we should be able to get some sort of levels of efficiencies here, though that it, whatever it costs is what it's going to cost, but that, at the end of the day, it ought to be cheaper for us to, to work together. I, that's what logically is, I'm struggling with. But I understand the nuances with, being a former transportation planner, I understand some of the nuances here. And I know it's not always clear, but I guess we're not sure yet what our numbers are going to be if we just maintain status quo. We're not sure if this number's a good number. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
It's the best number we have today, but it could be substantially more.
Once we get the RFP back, we'll know what our two-tiered, our current system would cost us for the next three years.
So we just don't have?
That may increase, may decrease, I doubt if it would decrease.
So we just don't have all the data we need yet, yet to compare to whether or not this is something for us to?
Yeah.
And it's, we don't know enough to say stop, we don't need to go any further, so we know we want to continue doing what we're doing, but we're not at a point yet where we're anywhere near ready to say, you know, we should be looking at making a decision and doing a deal.
Yeah, I get, tonight was more.
Just information.
Yeah, updating the board since the city council was updating, we felt the board should get that information. I think when we come back with the actual cost of a new tier, two-tiered system going forward, and what it would cost for us to bust the rest of the kids that wouldn't be part of the city's plan, and see what that cost is going to be. Then, I think the board will have the information they need to make a decision, do we continue moving forward, do we start engaging our parents and having conversations about it? We may get those numbers back and say, you know, the preliminary number that we received from first student, my recommendation would be, we can't go forward, we can't increase our transportation cost by a million dollars, we just, we just can't do it. So.
And it's too early to start raising our parents and stuff, saying we're going to do something, and we, if we don't have our arms fully around what the cost, cost differentials are going to be, that doesn't make sense to get people riled up if we're not, you know, cost differentials are such that, you know, it's going to take it off the table.
Yeah, we're, you and I are on the same page on that one. There's, apparently, and I'm visual, things that we should be engaging parents already, so I'm kind of in the court that, if we're not going to do it, let's don't rile them up if we don't need to, so.
I mean, well, if and then, hands and butts are candy and nuts, we'd all have a Merry Christmas, right?
But yeah, once we get the RFP results back, we'll bring that back to you, and we'll have, we'll have better information for you.
Quick question, you mentioned that somewhere between eight forty-five and nine o'clock, we'd have to have that as the start time for our secondary kids in order to make this viable. Is there some end time that would be off the?
Well.
Books, I mean, that wouldn't work?
I'm not sure that that's quite as much of a problem in the afternoon, as we have a, we have a, the reason that it's necessary to have that later start time in the mornings is that our, the way our peak hours operate, we have a morning peak hour from about, I mean, well, you could say from the beginning of our service day, but really from about six AM till eight AM is really the peak of our peak. So after eight o'clock, then we're able to, that's where we're able to find some of these efficiencies and serve these sixteen routes. And in the afternoon, it's broken up, you know, again, by middle schools getting out a little earlier than high schools, that breaks up some of that as well as, but then our, our afternoon peak starts around three o'clock, and it's really starting to wind down after five, five or five-thirty. So, that's why I say that, like with the activities bus, if that one's after six o'clock or six-thirty even, we're, we're going to have plenty of capacity, we're going to have plenty of vehicles and drivers available to serve those routes. It's just that, and also by splitting the middle and high schools like that, you, you basically double your capacity that way. We have, you know, buses available at the, for the, for the let-out of middle school, and then those same buses, in some cases, could be available for the let-out of high school, depending on when we schedule the routes. So the afternoon is a little, is a lot more flexible for us. We have a lot more capacity in the afternoons than we do in the morning. In the morning, it's just that, you know, we're, up until about eight o'clock in the morning, we have everything, we're throwing everything we've got out on the street, and some days it's still not enough. I mean, it's, you know, so if you add these school routes on top of that, between seven and eight, it's just, it won't work. We don't have enough vehicles for that.
Ms. Smith.
Has there been any, been any talk of seeing if one of the major employers town might adjust schedules and timing, which might shift your, your, your peak hours to, to help, you know, as a community solution, and they could adjust their times?
We have, we've brought that up, too, that, you know, the, a lot of our riders have, feel a real crunch in that morning peak hour, and if they were, if they were able to, you know, start half an hour earlier or half an hour later, and you kind of spread that demand out in the morning, it would be a
Big deal.
big help for us, too, yes.
Make the whole system more efficient.
It would, it would spread that demand out.
Make it cost less.
Yeah, it would, it would spread that demand out, it would, basically, in effect, increasing our capacity then throughout that, that peak hour.
But there hasn't been any, is there interest to at least discuss that as a possibility?
It's, it's something that we do bring up with them, and I do know that some departments or areas within that major employer downtown have, from time to time, done just that. But it's not necessarily an organization-wide.
Yeah, well, they got their own nuance, I mean, they have, they got to manage their business, they got to, you know, appreciate that, understand that, you know, it's all important for us, too, but I think it's also important if somehow for them, if, if they can make it work and engage, it'd be a good thing for them to, to engage with us on and see if, because this is a, it benefits them, it benefits students, it benefits everybody, so. But we want the most efficient system as possible, because that's going to cost us a lot less money than if we're simply accommodating. It costs money to accommodate people. If we can accommodate the masses, you know, then the fixed costs, we're in the operating, you know, the other costs related to, to the system will be less, will be, will be maximized, or minimized, I should say, the cost will be minimized, and it'd just be more efficient. So I, I certainly hope that they would strongly consider engaging in serious, you know, stations, and know if that's, if there's any remotely way possible, that, you know, we factor that into the equation, because that'll help everybody.
Ms. Seelinger.
Thank you for your presentation. I have two questions right now on, from the district side, one of which I forgot. Oh, what is your timeline for putting out the RFP for transportation, and can you talk more about the route study, Mr. Kepner?
The RFP is, as soon as we get to school year old, and we'll start working on that, it's kind of crunch time for that, just being, we're starting school Monday. The route, the special ed study is, you know, if we go with a single tier, we're trying to see how many, how many routes we would need to accommodate, you know, E-12 riding in on the same bus, you know, so that's kind of what we're looking at. What, what size of buses would we need? We may have to be much more specific on our, on our RFPs, too, on what we need for equipment. Right now, we have mid-size and small buses. We use the small buses to get into some tight apartment complexes, or cul-de-sacs, or whatever that we have to, to accommodate, so. But that'll, that'll give us a sense of what our, our need for equipment, and the number of routes is what we're trying to get at.
So just to clarify, the, the route study listed on the scope graphic is just for the special ed students?
Correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Workman.
I, I got really excited when Mr. Smith started talking here about adjusting some times, what I thought you were going to say was that, given that we have had a couple of sleep experts from the Mayo Clinic come and address this board concerning the benefit of earlier or later start times for our students in a lot of different categories, I thought where you were going with this was to
To be a part of the discussion.
Which would be to whether Mayo would be willing to subsidize some of our student costs in order to attain this goal, because I think it's very important.
I think the idea of the time adjustment and how that affects schedule, I think, certainly would be.
And I realize we're getting way far, far afield from what this meeting is intended to do, so I really appreciate the information that you've brought to us today, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Seelinger.
Not necessarily a question, but a comment, although we have mentioned we don't want to rile up parents, we know they're already riled up, so for the good of the cause, I would like to clarify, we are only talking about middle and high school students, we are not talking about putting elementary children on the bus, is this correct, Superintendent?
Yes, and I've said that multiple times on TV and radio, and anybody else who would listen to me, yeah.
And you've heard it here again.
We're hearing it again. And also, talking about implementation, which, which is way far down the way, but, again, to clarify and for the good of the cause, we would be doing lots of public input discussion, quelling fears, answering questions between board, administration, and probably you folks as well, I assume. I'm seeing head nodding in front of us.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think after we get the RFP back, and if it makes financial sense that we move forward, then, you know, our plan is, we have a connection with a Mayo physician that's done a lot of research on why secondary kids need more sleep, we would probably start the night off with him presenting, and then explain what we're doing and why we're doing it, and explain maybe why we're not able to put all of our students on yellow buses, and then take questions and answer any questions that they may have.
Mr. Barrow.
So, is there a timeframe?
We, like, when?
Well, more specifically, so, you've made this informational presentation tonight, when should we expect, or first county of the whole, when will you present next to them? Was there any time elements associated with the track?
Yeah, it does depend on, as we said, the route study and the, the proposals you get back from, with, for your RFP, those are really kind of the next major steps, that kind of determine the timetable. This study should be wrapped up by December. So by the end of this year, this, this study will, you know, the report will be made, and we can, and then this body and the city council can do with it what they will, but the report will be there, and the information will be there by the end of this year. But there are some practicalities to look into as to when it could be implemented, if that's what you were also asking. And so, one of the major kind of physical realities is that when we place an order for a new bus, it takes anywhere from twelve to fifteen months to have it delivered, so that's, that will delay the, or that starts to, you start to see where the, the start time for anything that we want to move forward with would be, probably not going to be in the fall of 2019. Also, because we won't have, we don't, we aren't going to have all the information we need by the fall of 2019. So, the fall of 2020 is probably the earliest that it would be possible. It, that, that also has to, it also has to coincide with our full build-out of our transit development plans, the restructuring that I mentioned earlier. That, right now, has been, that implementation has been elongated. We were originally going to have some of that, some of the more radical route restructuring implemented, in fact, this past July, but due to budget considerations and availability of vehicles, frankly, we had to delay that. And so now it's looking like that might not be, the full build-out may not happen until July of 2020 at the earliest. So, at that point, then, fall of 2020 would come after that, if that were all to work out, fall of 2020 might be possible. But the clock is ticking, because after the first of, after, so in January of 2019, you know, fifteen months later is, is March of 2020, and those, that's just to get the vehicles delivered, if we order them immediately in January. It takes a few months to get them roadworthy, they have to be inspected, they have to be licensed, they have to have some other equipment installed upon them, and so, yeah, it could...
Expand facilities.
Yeah, the facility, the facility has to be expanded as well. So, fall of 2020 is possible, but I think that's the earliest possible at this point.
Ms. Becker.
I'm not sure if this is for school district or for you, Mr. Law, but, so, did any of the studies, or did you, did anybody look at what other cities have done this with their busing system in schools? And is there a size of a city that it seems to be beneficial to do, to do this?
We did look at other cities, and we, I don't, I don't really know how to answer the si, if there's an optimal size, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure I know an answer to that.
Or is there an optimum type of employment? I mean, Rochester is, I don't, I don't know if Rochester is unique in how, you know, that we need people kind of all at this certain time, or, or if it's not, if it's any city, you know, everyone starts at eight o'clock, or, but?
Well, one of the things we, we find ourselves fortunate in mass transit in Rochester because we do have a, a very big employer downtown. So that, that really does help contribute to a lot of the density in Rochester that's necessary for transit to work properly and efficiently. And so, you know, we actually do have a downtown that still operates as a central business district. You know, many cities across the country are trying to recreate that. Here in Rochester, we've still, we've got that. So that really does help our transit system to be a healthy one, and one that's very well-used. So, I don't know that it's so much about size, I think it's probably about density, and I think there is, you know, there probably, there is enough density in the city to, to support a, a mass transit system as it currently, as it currently is. You know, one of the, one of the sets of routes in the study, the John Marshall and John Adams pair, there, so many of those students actually live in the city, as opposed to, say, the other, the other two pairs, where there are a lot of, of students that go to, say, Mayo High and Century High, who live outside, they're in the district, but they're outside the city limits. John Marshall and John Adams is really not that way, they're really, and so there's a density there as well, of, there's a good, there's a reservoir of ridership, and I think that the John Marshall route, or to serve John Marshall High School would take, I think, five of these buses, five of these, five of these routes, I mean, it's a, it's a big number of them, and so. So I guess it's not so much about size and type of community, I think it really is about density. Transit usually always comes back to that. We did look at some specific examples of the Twin Cities, where they have a program, and the, also the experience of Duluth, and I know that Des Moines was an area where this type of, of project was, was done as well, and they just, they all have, they all have to craft their own solution.
They all have their own nuances.
Yeah, they're really, and from, from my research into it, there's really just not a one-size-fits-all, there's not like a, there's not like a formula that if you follow that, everything else will, it'll make it work, it's just every city is so different, and every transit system is so different, and every school district, too. So, that's basically all I could say to that, there may be others who could answer differently.
So is it, so does it have to be like an all or nothing, since we still are going to have, even in the best-case scenario, we're still going to have some yellow buses? Is it something that, instead of saying it's only, only the students that are, you know, are able to ride on the, on the existing routes, and you're not going to have to buy seventeen new buses, you're not going to have to do any of that, they're just going to fill in the stuff you already have? And then anyone who, you know, is really outside of the school, outside of the, kind of your area where you, they ride a traditional yellow bus? Is that something that we've looked at, or?
If I'm understanding, we really did look at that, that was like the first thing we looked at, how can we use our existing routes to serve, and that's, that's something that's possible, but, you know, the slide where I showed, slide five, I think, where it shows the, the public school students that are served, the regular route would only catch about two hundred and twelve of them. And what that means is that there, there are only those, those are the, the only few students that would be able to take a bus directly from their house to the school without, without transferring. I mean, the, and of course, that's possible right now for a lot of students, they can, they can get to school using our public transit routes, but for many of them, they find that it's, it doesn't go directly past their school. For example, John Marshall, I mentioned earlier, it's on the Route 10, well, if you don't live on the Route 10, you know, you might, you might live, you know, really not that far away from the school, but you might be on the Route 9 or the Route 11, and in that case, you've got to go downtown, transfer, you know, if I catch one bus, go downtown, transfer onto the 10, and then go up to school, that means you might be leaving home at six o'clock in the morning to get there for an eight o'clock start time, and that's not always going to be possible for every, for every student. There are going to be some hardy individuals who will do that, and I applaud them for that, but, you know, every time you introduce a transfer, that's an obstacle to, to transit ridership, and we know, we know this from long experience. So, in this, that was actually one of the things that, when we started off with the, with the study, and kind of the phase one of the study, that I was really surprised about, the fact that there were so few students who were going to be served by a direct ride from their home to their, to their school. And, yes, all, all of the public schools are served by one of our routes, at least one of our routes, but it's only going to be, if you want that direct ride, it's only going to be a narrow band of students that live, you know, within a quarter mile or so on either side of that, that route. So that means transfers for the others, and that, that just becomes an obstacle.
Or boundary changes.
Well, I suppose, yeah.
Okay, another topic. Any other questions? Thank you so much and we look forward to an update.
Thank you very much.
Three point oh two, above and beyond, Mr. Munoz.
With a lot of our, whoa, there we go. With a lot of our staff off over the summer, we didn't have a lot of nominations. We only had two, so, uh, selecting examples to share with you was pretty easy today. Uh, we had two. First one was, uh, Matt, and the custodial staff at John Marshall High School. And this was by Nicole Mueller, who is, uh, her office is being moved out to John Marshall this year. She wrote, "Matt and the JM custodial staff have gone above and beyond. They are working on many projects this summer at the building. They found time to assist me in moving all of my furniture and boxes into my new space at the building. Entire team is very welcoming, friendly, and wonderful. Thank you." And Munir, you've seen that name before. He's gotten, he's the night custodian here in this building. He's been nominated many a times. Uh, this time Sandy Roeder, uh, nominated him. Says, "When Munir is asked to help outside for his regular responsibilities, he doesn't hesitate. He just helps. He always has a smile, pleasant, happy, and kind words for everyone. He has seen me carrying something heavy and has stopped to help me." So, congratulations to the two and, uh, we appreciate their service to our district.
Three point oh three, school board committee assignments updates. Um, school board members are in district and community boards and committees. Anyone have a report about an event that you have attended or work you've done? Ms. Seelager.
I will, uh, mention the poverty simulation I attended last week along with Director Workman and, uh, Director Marvin. Uh, it was an opportunity put on by, uh, Olmsted County. Uh, I think it was a really, uh, great exercise in, uh, cramming a month of living in poverty into an hour and, uh, working in a family system. Uh, Jean and I actually just ended up in the same family by cha, by chance, um, and learned how to get around to all the various, uh, amenities and services we needed. Uh, Director Workman, Workman could speak to her, uh, impersonation of an eighty-five-year-old homeless woman who had many more challenges than, uh, those of us living in a family. But I think it was really eye-opening. Um, we know that we have families and students living in poverty and the obstacles that they face, but, um, and, and even, you know, it was a simulation. It wasn't a game. We were taking it seriously, um, how difficult it is for these families to get to the services they need, to get the resources they need, um, and appreciation for, uh, the county for putting that on and, uh, offering that to our community.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, four point oh, consent agenda. This is an action item. Um, any items, um, anyone wants removed for a separate consideration?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this. Any discussion on favors, Ms. Workman?
Yes, um, I'm not sure if this should come before or after we move this. It doesn't have anything directly related to the content of the human resources action, but perhaps an explanation of the different categories of employees would be helpful to the bu, the public as well as, um, to the board, since there are a lot of different, different categories for teacher employment and so on.
Do you want Mr. Bakken maybe to?
Yes, we can, we can have him do that. Uh, it's the same categories we've used even way before I've gotten here, but I, Carl can come up and explain what the different, uh, I assume you're talking about the teaching categories.
Correct.
Carl can explain that for us.
On the employment ones, I think we had the teacher employment, the temporary teacher employment, and the term substitute teacher employment as three different categories.
Sure. Um, as Superintendent Munoz referenced, these have been used and I checked with a couple of the folks in our office who have been here, um, fifteen years plus, and they said these are categories that they've used since they've been here even before. Uh, a teacher employment would be a teacher who is a regular teacher, regular position, full license. Um, so we're hiring for a certain FTE in that teacher. It's a regular position. It's not temporary and it's, the teacher has the appropriate license. Um, a temporary teacher employment, um, the reason you probably see a, a high number of those is due to, um, they, those teachers do not have full licensure. So, they have a temporary license that's good for one year. And if you look down through that list, you'll see a lot of those teachers are in our special education area, which means they might have, uh, an elementary license. They might have a license in history or English, but they need to get a one-year license to be a special ed teacher. And a term sub-teacher employment, that is a position that is being held for someone who has a leave of absence and that specific position is being held for them.
And then I think some of the categories of unemployment are pretty clear. Teacher resignation, teacher retirement, teacher leave of absence could be for-
Medical.
Medical.
Could be a personal leave of absence, professional, I mean, uh, like some might go back to school or, um, someone might be doing, a parent might be doing their, uh, student teaching.
And then change of employ, employment could mean a change in the number of hours or their FTE that they're working in or perhaps a different assignment in a different building?
Correct, or they could be moving to a different, uh, unit.
Okay. And then unrequested leave of absence?
Do we have any of those?
I don't remember if there were any on this particular list. I think there were two.
Unrequested leave of absence. Um, those would be in, in those that we, we have very few of those.
Right.
Um, those would be situations where, uh, in, in those two cases, there were positions that, um, those individuals were, um, displaced during the staffing process. Their position was changed or no longer existed at the end of the last school year and they had yet to pick a position. And we, the, the communication is, uh, these positions are available and if you don't take any of those, you're putting your, you're on an unrequested leave of absence. So, you're kind of displacing yourself until they pick a position.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Any other questions?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Retirements.
Yes, thank you for reminding me. We do have three retirements. We have a clerical retirement. Kathleen Gibson is Assistant Principal Secretary at Century High School. Uh, she'll be retiring effectively September thirtieth and she has twenty-two years to the ser, uh, service to the district. Uh, we have one non-scheduled retirement. Rita Erickson, she's a licensed practical nurse at Falwell Elementary and she retired August thirteenth. Been in the district four and a half years. And one maintenance retirement, Robert Crabtree. Uh, he's been a custodian at John Marshall High School. He retired August twenty-fourth and he has eighteen years of service to, to the district. So, we thank all three of them for their service to the district.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. Five point oh one, adminis, administration. Introduction of new administrators.
Yes, at this time I'm going to have, uh, Carl Bakken, Executive Director of, uh, Human Resources, introduce our, uh, changes in administration.
I'm very pleased to be in front of you tonight to introduce, uh, both our new administrators and administrators who changed buildings or changed positions. And I want to thank all of those folks for sticking around tonight. I'm going to start with the folks, uh, the administrators that are new to our district. And I'd ask you to come up here and stand. We might have to do a couple of rows because we have a lot of, um, new admin, well, a lot of changes this year and a few new faces to the district. Jessica Madsen. Jessica Madsen is our new early childhood family services manager in community education. Uh, pri- wherever you want to stand. Now I'm thrown off here. Okay, I got to find my spot. There's, uh, prior to joining the district, Ms. Madsen worked for the Oseo School Districts as an early childhood program manager for the past year. She also worked for the Minnesota Department of Education as a parent aware coordinator for six years. Ms. Madsen attended state, I'm, I used to call it Saint, Saint Cloud State, but how it's listed anymore is Minnesota State College and University, Saint Cloud, for parent education, community education, and a master's degree in early childhood, special education, community, and family cer, um, studies. Angela McAndrews. Angela McAndrews is our new lead principal at Kellogg Middle School. Angela spent the last two years at IJ Holton Intermediate in Austin as principal. She was also an assistant principal, curriculum director, and coach in Fairville prior to coming to Rochester Public Schools. Ms. McAndrews received her bachelor's from Winona State University and her master's and K-12 principal licensure from Saint Mary's. Orion Thurston. Orion couldn't make it tonight. Orion was the, has been, uh, is the new associate principal at John Marshall High School. Orion was the dean of students at Patrick Henry in Minneapolis in two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen. Since then, he has been the student management specialist in Brooklyn Park. And Mr. Thurston received his bachelor's, master's, and administrative degree from Minnesota State College and University, Saint Cloud. So, those are our three new administrators. Now I'd like to introduce the administrators who either changed buildings or positions in the district. Amy Adams. Amy went, moved from associate principal at Churchill Hoover to assistant principal at Churchill Hoover. Amy was mo, most recently served as the associate principal, as I just said. Prior to this, Amy has been a clinical coach and teacher for the district. She's been in the district for fifteen years. Kristen Ingbrecht. Kristen is the new lead principal at Bamber Valley. She, prior to that, she was in the assistant principal role at Bamber for the past three years. Kristen has also been an implementation associate for the district and served as an elementary teacher and she's been in the district for eleven years. Heidi Howe. Heidi moved from assistant principal at Riverside to a s, assistant principal at Gage. Heidi has been in the role of assistant principal at Riverside for the past four years and she's been in the district for four years. Amy Hughes. Amy is the new associate principal at Gage. And Amy has served in the role of community schools instructional coach for the past year. Prior to this, she's been in an implementation associate and a teacher for the district for a total of sixteen years. Eric Johnson. Eric is the new lead principal at John Marshall. Prior to that, he's been the principal at Kellogg Middle School for three years and he's been in the district for three years. Heather Clavetter. Heather is the new principal at Jefferson Elementary. Most recently, she was the associate principal at Gage and Riverside. And prior to that, she was, um, an assist, associate principal at Bamber. She's also been an instructional coach and teacher within the district and she's been here for sixteen years. Tim Lindberg. Tim is moving from lead principal at John Marshall to lead principal at the Alternative Learning Center. Tim has been the lead principal at John Marshall High School for the past seven years. Prior to this, Tim has been a teacher and, and held different administrative positions in the district for a total of twenty-seven years. Chris Lingan. Chris Lingan is the new director of elementary and secondary education here at the Edison Building. Chris most recently served as, uh, in the role of principal at Jefferson for the past five years. Prior to this, Chris has been an administrator at the district level. Uh, it was an administrator at Fridel and a teacher in the district and he's been in the district for a total of twenty-three years. Denise Long. Denise is the new associate principal at Willow Creek Middle School. Denise, uh, most recently served in an interim position as the assistant principal at John Marshall. Prior to that, she was an instructional coach at Washington and Bishop and she's been with the district for a total of four years. Angela McNair. Angela is the new assistant principal at John Marshall High School. She was most recently the associate principal at John Marshall High School. And prior to this, she has been an instructional coach, behavior specialist, and teacher in the district and she's been in the district for ten years. Andrew Newman. Andrew is the new principal at Willow Creek Middle School. Prior to that, Andrew had spent the last two years as the assistant principal at Willow Creek Middle School and he's been in the district for a total of two years. Sam Pearson. Sam moved from associate principal at Van, Bamber Valley to assistant principal at Bamber Valley. Uh, prior to this, Sam was also the associate principal at Gage and Sam has been in the district for a total of four years. Erin Raymond. Erin is the new assistant principal at Riverside Elementary School. Erin most currently, most recently served as the assistant, or I'm sorry, the associate principal at Fridel and was also a TOSA administrative assistant at Fridel. Erin has also been a math teacher within the district and has been here for seventeen years. Julie Ruzek. It's getting to be a long walk to get up here now. Julie is the coordinator of family and community partnerships. Julie has served in similar roles prior to this role, um, including coordinator of community and family engagement and family and community liaison. She's also been a teacher on special assignment and a teacher for the district and she's been here for a total of eleven years. Craig Schneider. This is the last one. Craig has moved from the associate principal at Willow Creek to the assistant principal at Willow Creek. Um, and Craig has spent his entire four years prior to this year as the associate at Willow Creek. So, our new administrators.
Mr. Munoz, as a way of welcoming them to their new positions, do they get the day off tomorrow?
No. I'm sorry, but-
That's a management issue.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great year.
Seven point oh one, approval of energy conservation resolution. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, uh, Mr. Carlson will brief us on this item. Just, uh, remind the board that, uh, at a previous meeting, we, uh, entered into a partnership with Senator Stig to conserve energy and save money. So, this is the next step of that process.
Thank you, uh, school board and Superintendent Munoz. Uh, tonight I am bringing forward as the program liaison. I don't, not sure how I ended up with that title, but I am our energy program liaison, uh, now. And, uh, we are asking that you approve this resolution tonight to just show your overarching support, uh, to the staff that you, uh, would like us to do the best we can to reduce costs and save energy, um, both from a budgetary impact and as a social responsibility, um, impact. So, um, this is a briefing item, but if you would, uh, be so inclined, I wouldn't be opposed to you moving it to action.
Yes, Ms. Becker.
I have a question. So, what are the two reasons why you want us to approve this?
Well, part of it is because of our contract with Senator Stig says we need you to approve it within sixty days. But I, we would like you to approve it because, um, we want you to show your support to the staff. But I...we would like you to approve it because we want you to show your support to the staff. In other words, should we get any negative feedback from staff as we go around and we seek to change behaviors and save costs with energy usage, we want to be able to say, you know, this comes all the way or goes all the way up to the school board. They are fully supportive behind this. And then the social part was more just...I think it's the right thing to do for us to try to minimize our energy usage in the district.
Okay.
Well, I do have a just...so are you anticipating potentially staff to not be in favor of conserving energy and be socially conscious and...or what?
Hopefully not on the socially...social part, but I could say, you know, comfort is going to be a big issue. We want our staff to be comfortable, so we're going to set up guidelines as staff to say we want the air conditioning to be on at this certain temperature. That might not be the preferred temperature of everybody, but it's going to be within the guidelines of ASHRAE as well as a point where we think is comfortable and affordable. And so there could be pushback from time to time, saying, "I don't feel the way I exactly want to feel." But I can tell you, our guidelines are not going to be too different from where they are right now. What we're really trying to save money is in the non...or the unoccupied times. So we want to make sure we're shutting down air conditioning, heating as soon as possible as people are leaving the building. That's probably going to be the biggest change and the biggest possibility of saving energy.
So maybe a little cooler when they get there and warm up.
Well, speaking as a person who was the energy manager for a district there, you know, for example, you know, the good thing about this company is we determine what the set point's going to be, and truly determine...the whole philosophy is when kids are in session, we want people to be comfortable. But when they're not in session, for example, on weekends, you don't...you can't expect to walk into a high school on a Saturday and expect it to be the same temperature it's going to be Monday through Friday. So it's really...so yes, you get some pushback, you know, there are usually coming in and it being nice and toasty in the winter. On a weekend, it may not be nice and toasty. They may have to dress appropriately if they're going to come into a building on a weekend. So there's some, and it's really about changing habits. I did this for, I think, three years, and there was a little resistance, but overall, there wasn't a lot of resistance. It's really even at the elementaries, you know, the students all have...they assign today, "You're the line leader," and you're the...well, now, the elementaries were...you're going to be the energy leader today, so you're the last one in the line. You shut the lights off when we leave the classroom to go to music or something like that. So it's...but I think what we're asking is that if we do get any resistance, we know we have the support. The board is behind this, and I think that'll go a long ways for us.
Anyone interested in moving this to action? Ms. Munoz?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move this to action. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. This is now an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 directs the superintendent and staff to develop and implement short and long-range strategies to maximize energy conservation.
With approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. 7.02 closed session for negotiations.
Pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13D.03 subdivision 1, I move to go into closed session to discuss labor negotiations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. We are reconvened at 7:06 PM. And we are adjourned at 7:06 PM.